Fantastic, do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstaining, thank you. And now, a discussion and anticipated action on the middle school athletics and activities program that Ann has so craftily made.
If I could just maybe thirty seconds?
Yeah.
I met with Dr. Vogel and Ann today. And Pam is not here, she had made travel plans before the meeting was scheduled, so. I guess just as a result of your individual meetings that you held in your town, which Ann attended, all of them, attended I think the one in Salisbury, but. So as a result of that, Ann heard a lot of feedback and got some input to those various meetings, and then met with All-Star Transportation with Michelle Christensen. And we think, or we hope that some results of some of Ann's work to maybe alleviate some of the concerns that were voiced.
Yeah.
That were voiced. So specifically with respect to transportation, time on the bus, I think was the biggest one, and then the other one was the late bus with students.
Mixing and racing.
Mixing and racing, so turn it over to Ann for talking about those two issues. Thank you.
Let her out. So like Sam's alluded to, I met, gave the presentation at each of your boards with community involvement and took notes at each one of them. And like Sam said, the biggest concern regarding this proposal was the transportation, the length of time on a bus. And then the second most popular concern was the mixing of the high school with the middle school on the late bus. So after I left Cornwall, on my home, I immediately started thinking, how can we address these concerns? So we sat down, like Sam said, and started thinking about what we can do better. So one of the things that we thought of is, we have two fourteen passenger buses, one is here at the high school and one is in Kent. And we thought that that would be a great way to alleviate some of that transportation with by utilizing those two buses. Now, the white bus that we have here at the high school is used in the springtime. So for the springtime changes that we would have to make, use a yellow bus. But for the fall, you just referred to this packet, you can see that where it says, as my daughter now calls it, hashtag K and hashtag W. The hashtag K would be the bus owned by Kent Center, and the hashtag W is the bus owned by Region One who's at Tonic. What we would do is, we would pay for the drivers to drive those buses, and we would probably make some arrangement with Kent Center to pick up, whether it's some maintenance fees or something like that, to help them out with that. But that would be a direct bus from Kent to the facility and then back. So ultimately, the Kent bus would pick up at 3:10, it would arrive on Veterans Field at 3:35, alleviating all that driving to Cornwall and Kellogg and back to Sharon. The hashtag W would start off in Cornwall, because they have the earlier dismissal time, they would go to Kellogg, and they would arrive at Veterans Field at approximately 3:30.
I'm sorry, just to jump back.
Yes, absolutely.
The pickup time in Kent would be?
At dismissal.
Which is, which varies, or it's?
No, 3:10.
Oh, it's not on here, I'm on 3:10.
Yeah, 3:10, okay, okay.
Oh, I'm looking in the wrong place, sorry, my bad. I get it, I see, I see, I see, I see.
And then, so the one school bus would be starting on North Canaan, going to Salisbury, and then arriving at Veterans Field at 3:45. Those three routes would go, would we just reverse it? So instead of bringing the students to the high school for the late bus, those three vehicles would pick up at Veterans Field and go back to their respective schools. Now, when there are two schools associated with a route, the bus would wait ten minutes for parents to be picked up. If at that point, the parents were not there to pick up, the students would then go into the building where there's a custodian. Now, it's not direct supervision, it's not the most ideal, but hopefully we can stress to our parents, you need to be there in picking up your child, or have a plan B if you can't be there. So that way, the students will be going back, they're supervised for ten minutes, and then picked up by the parent. So it does push a little bit of, the Cornwall would be arriving about 5:35, Kent would be arriving back at 5:45, Cornwall at 5:35, Kellogg at 6:00, Salisbury would arrive at 5:35, and Canaan would be at 6:00. And again, that would be directly to the school, they would not be stopping at the various points at our late bus.
So what time do they leave Veterans Field?
The practices would end about 5:15. Of course, that would change depending upon daylight savings time.
Correct.
You can see the practice right below it, it says practice 3:50 to 5:15. So an added piece of this would be that for the fall, we would add an option of an art garage that would be supervised by our artists here at the high school, but it would be in Sharon. So again, students would be dropped in Sharon at one central location, and then boarding the bus to back to the schools. So that would be an added bonus, a non-athletic added bonus to be started next year.
So on their way to Veterans Field, they would probably stop at Sharon?
Sharon, right.
And then pick those up kids, depending on who, and they would, the kids would just have to know which bus to get on.
Exactly.
So while the kids are practicing soccer, anybody that wanted to be partaking in art would be?
Art garage, correct, at Sharon.
Nice.
That would be Mondays and Fridays, correct?
Right, that would not be an everyday type of an arrangement, well, whatever, probably like a Monday, Friday, at least two day a week.
And the high school would be available the other days when the art garage folks would be here? Because right now, the art garage is funded through grant funding.
Yes.
And we have people in the community that work with the art garage, and they would, they met with Pam, and so they'd be more than happy to have the high school students act as mentors for the middle school students. And that actually would encourage.
But when are the kids going to the high school?
Well, that's.
Hold on.
Before you go in for service a little bit later, we sound a little bit, so you're now proposing that these three buses go from the school through the field and back to the school?
Correct. It would alleviate any use of the late bus.
Right.
And it would decrease some transportation time.
Okay, it decreases transportation time, does it decrease transportation cost, or is it about the same, or?
It theoretically, it could, because we would be paying for the bus drivers, which would be at a less cost than paying for a yellow bus. So what, if we're using?
We're using two of our buses.
But fuel, but fuel cost and maintenance would be?
Right, it'd be, it would, I mean.
We've worked out the exact numbers with All-Star yet, but rather than us contract for two buses, full freight, which is sixty dollars, sixty-three dollars an hour. We wouldn't be contracting for two, we'd be contracting for one, but we would have some additional expenses, which we haven't yet worked out.
And the other, the other bus is, you say is our bus?
The high school.
So it'd be the?
Kent is the other one.
Yeah. The hashtag K is Kent Center's, and hashtag W is our school bus here.
So Kent's would be, assuming we worked that out with Kent, that would transport Kent students only.
Right.
In that, by transporting Kent students, that actually frees up, I think, I'm assuming everybody got that, it would free up the others to get to the places quicker. The question that I asked Ann when we met about this for the first time was, well, can we get back to the school earlier? Which was, I guess, was an option, but the idea is to maximize practice and participation time at the fields. So it still gets back earlier, but not quite as early as it could have been, but I think you're trying to balance more to practice time and getting back at these all the time.
So two notes, one, I would just say that I would make sure that the art is happening on designated practice days as opposed to game days, because wouldn't that complicate things as far as pickup and drop off?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
So that would be?
And my other question is, and maybe you're just about to say it, is what about game days and that transportation?
They'd still drop back at the high school?
Well, that would still be, that would still be the same.
So that would be at the high school, they'd drop back and be at the high school?
The, the, yes, yes, yes.
But the draw, so it would be the same, we would be using the same buses, having the same pickups?
For home games.
Well, no, I'm talking about away games, I'm sorry.
Also, for away games, the bus may be a little bit different, because the pathway may be, depending upon where we were going.
Right, okay.
Is now a good time to talk about that? Or, no, games, you talked about three in-house and?
No, 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 not, not, not yet, not yet.
Sorry.
Next, next season.
Okay, so, so, so on gate back, on away game days, right now, the plan is for the bus to come back to the high school, and if parents are unable to go to the games, somebody needs to?
Away game.
That's what I'm saying.
An away game.
Yes.
So the pickup from an away game happens here?
Yeah, yeah.
Correct, happens.
Or at the site?
Or at the site, yes, because then that way too, the coaches can supervise the students until they are picked up. And that way, they're at one school, one site, as opposed to dropping off at various points where we don't know who's there at that time.
I would also just suggest that with parents who are repeat offenders of not showing up and leaving their kids in the care of a custodian, that there should be some kind of a penalty about their child's ability to participate, just to, you know, not to punish the child, but just to make sure that the parents understand.
Right, the parents are there.
The, you know, severity of, you know.
I think too, most, in most cases, if I'm somewhere picking up my child and her friend is not ready, I will stay there.
Yeah.
I'll never leave a child, like even at the late bus, at the, in the firehouse in Canaan, if I get there and pick up my daughter and there's one person left whose mom hasn't shown up.
Yeah, you hang.
I pretty much stay there, because I'm like, I'll just wait till your mom comes, you know what I mean? So I would think, you know, some parents will probably.
I think it'll take care of itself.
Right, that's what I mean.
I don't anticipate a lot of that happening, I just think we need to anticipate.
Well, this is the coach.
No, no. Because the coach is not going to be on that bus.
Okay.
This is, the coach is going.
Goes back to field, right.
The coach is going to be at the field, and this is the bus that's going back to the individual schools.
Oh, to the individual schools, we're not talking about coming back there after.
Correct, correct, yeah, this is after, this is a practice.
So the custodial staff would be the supervisor of adults, if, if for, if for some instance there was not a pickup?
That's, it wouldn't be, contractually.
Yeah, well, that, that maybe, that might be something that needs to be addressed.
Well, just, just to have a person.
I mean, obviously, they would be there, custodians or something, it wouldn't be expected, though, supervisor, I don't think.
No, but just.
No, not like, not like study hall.
Yeah, no, 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 no.
That's not what I meant.
Just to have a person, so if that, if that child, child needed to get into that building, the custodian would be there to let them into the building.
Right.
So they're not staying outside and waiting.
Got it, yeah. In the cold.
Right. So that is for the fall. Moving on to the wintertime, one of the concerns was the, the number of students, and, you know, dividing the region into two teams would be maybe some difficulty number-wise. So we looked at it again, and what we decided to do is to go two schools per team geographically, which would pair up Sharon and Salisbury, Cornwall and Kent, Kellogg and North Canaan. So now we have, with the facilities, Sharon would be going to Salisbury, Kellogg would be going to North Canaan, Cornwall and Kent both have very nice facilities. So in that sense, what we could do is we could, we could kind of divide it up and say, sometimes we're in Kent and sometimes we're in Cornwall, because both gyms are comparable.
And North Canaan's gym isn't even a regulation sized gym, it's compared to.
Right, but it's better than Kellogg's.
Why is it better than Kellogg's? It's not, it's not bigger than Kellogg's.
But it's better designed than Kellogg's, so.
I don't know, Ann, I've done an awful lot of the gym, either North Canaan Elementary School gym, and at both gyms, I don't know, that, that's a three-quarter gym at North Canaan.
We could measure it out then, because I don't think, I don't think Kellogg's is appropriate.
What's not appropriate about it, I just wonder?
The floor is not appropriate, I don't know, to be honest, if the space on either end is appropriate.
Well, I think, I, I, I would hope that you would take a look at both of those.
Oh, I would, absolutely.
At both things gyms, because.
Absolutely.
It's, North Canaan's, I know that you guys are in the process of always trying to, to upgrade, upgrade your gym, and that gym is a three-quarter, is a three-quarter gym.
Yeah, we could, I could measure it out then.
And it's, and the way, the way you go from end to end, you go right into the stage at that gym too.
On the wall. But the one thing I remember about Kellogg is, isn't there a big concrete pillar, like right in the middle?
No.
Not in the middle, but like off to one side where those, the stands are?
We'll definitely have Ann look into that.
Yes, that's, yeah.
Study that. I think, right now, we still want to get, we appreciate the questions and things to follow up on, but we don't want to get bogged down in too many details, or we'll never get to the end of her presentation.
So, to just kind of see what the buses, so Sharon going to Salisbury, Sharon would be picked up at 3:10, dropped off at, at Salisbury at 3:30, Kellogg will be picked up at 3:10, dropped off in Canaan at 3:30, and then depending upon which direction we were going, either Cornwall will be picked up and dropped off, or Kent will be picked up and dropped off. Now remember, there is no return after basketball, because the practices, the way the practices run, we, it would have to be a parent pickup for both, early in the late. And I wrote down, so early practice would be 3:45 to 5:00, and 5:00 to 6:15 for that. Currently, we have to talk with Hotchkiss about the swim time. We currently swim at three o'clock.
We'd be in the high school.
We'd be in the high school, which of course, that's not really applicable to a middle school at this point. So that would be a discussion to have with, with Hotchkiss about trying to find some time, because right now, the Hotchkiss team has their time solidified and they're not willing to move.
To move, yes, that was made clear.
Yes.
Well, would they move?
Right, exactly.
It is their pool.
It is their pool. So that was, that's to be worked out. We thought about maybe if we could add ski team or skiing, I know each of the schools do some type of ski program, but maybe that's another option to add for, for children to do.
Can I ask you, what about the swimming pool at Greer?
It's not appropriate.
It's not appropriate, okay.
No, unfortunately.
Don't need to say anything.
Unfortunately, it's a four foot deep.
Oh.
Oh, yeah, so it's.
So you can't, you, there's no diving.
There's no diving.
So, great for laps, but nothing for, for that. So adding into winter, we would continue with the art garage, which would be here at the high school, but we'd also add robotics. And the way we would do that is on Wednesdays during January and February, there is a bus that brings the regional band and chorus kids to the high school every week. So anyone who's interested in adding in art garage and robotics?
Could take that bus.
Could take that bus on Wednesdays to the high school.
And then pickup would be here.
And then pickup would be here.
Because, yeah, I know, region, regional band and chorus pickup is here at high.
Right, or they, or they have the option of going on the late bus.
Late bus if they want to.
If they want to.
I didn't know that.
Yes, yes. So, and then finally, on to spring, where we, we go back to Veterans Field for softball, baseball, and at the high school for track and field. So, again, we utilize Kent's bus, so Kent would be picked up at 3:10 and dropped off at 3:30. They would then take any of the track athletes from Kent and arrive at the high school. Now, the one thing I wanted to ask about is if we could put Sharon kids on that Kent bus to get them to the high school for track?
Is that a fifteen thousand your bus?
Fourteen.
Fourteen.
So it depends upon?
Enrollment.
Enrollment.
Participation, I should say.
Particip, right, participation, but that's an option, to get those Sharon track kids to the high school. Because we utilize our white bus during the spring for our teams, we would then have to add one more bus for yellow, so that would be Cornwall to Kellogg, arrive, Cornwall to Kellogg, to the high school at 3:25, and then to drop off the track kids, and then arrive at Veterans Field for 3:45. And then bus number two would go North Canaan, Salisbury, the high school, and then to Veterans Field for four o'clock. And again, students interested in art garage and robotics could hop on those buses, be dropped off here at the high school when the track students are dropped off.
Got it, so that second bus they're adding back brings us back to what was originally what you were just planning for.
Correct.
Ann, did I miss that, is cross-country going to be at Veterans Field?
Veterans, yes, yes.
Oh, okay, so I wasn't sure, I know we had originally discussed it being here, but it's going to be.
Here, no, we're doing everything at Veterans.
Everything's going to be at Veterans.
Everything's going to be in Sharon, so, so fall?
For the fall, yeah.
Fall, art garage will be in Sharon, and then, and then winter and the spring, robotics and art garage would be here at the high school.
How is the cross-country going to work at Veterans Field?
We would just map out a course there. It's just a distance, it'd be around the fields.
They have a walking track.
So that could be.
It'd be perfect.
Right.
I have a question about winter sports and basketball, if we find that the participation, not that I anticipate this, because I know that we're, it's pretty well, well-peopled, but if we find that the numbers don't warrant three teams but warrant two teams, what would be the?
We could go back to.
What would the dividing, would it be a north-south, or a south or an east-west division?
The, the problem with that east-west would be the Salisbury-Kent, those are two large schools that funneling into one. So that's how we originally proposed it as an east-west.
Right.
The problem with the north-south is that now you've got.
Now we've got Canaan and Salisbury together.
Canaan and Salisbury.
Yeah, yeah.
So we would have to address that.
I was just thinking geography and, you know.
Right.
And, and, you know, addressing travel time and does that, which is more important, you know, I guess, is like my thought of, but I leave it to the greater minds in mind. Well, that's just great, Ann, I think it's a great response to the concerns that were aired.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you very much. Sam, do you have anything to add to the? So I would just venture to say that maybe we sort of do a quick roundtable, so that you guys can provide to this table the feedback you got from your boards and what your, what your board's decision was regarding putting this forward to the Region One Board for, you know, budgetary funding, you know. Pat, you want to start?
Sure, our, our vote was unanimous, no, I think only one of, of two, many of the concerns we had, some of them seem to have been addressed through this redo here. But we still have, we still have concerns about the, the philosophy of middle school, middle school sports and, and why, why we, why we do that, we are concerned. And I, I, I'm assuming that the, you would still have the trial type things for the A and B diversity and junior diversity, that was a real issue.
The skill evaluation of players.
Well, it was a real issue dividing them up. From what we could glean from the parents, really the only parent that, that was, was a member of the committee, all the rest of the parents had real concerns, as I said, some of those concerns were addressed by what Ann we did here. One of the biggest concerns as far as the bus with high school kids, that was absolutely the biggest concern. Time was another big concern. If the board had to reconsider based on this new, a new thing, maybe the decision would be different, I don't know. But when we went to our board meetings, we were told.
You had it, you had, yeah, no.
Yeah, we had it, we had it, we were told, this was, I'm glad that Ann took the time to, to try to, to do it, but, and I know that probably budget-wise, you need to have this decision tonight, but.
It would be helpful, just because I think that the sooner that they can start penciling, penciling in the number.
And we don't think that, from, from what we could glean, from what the kids told parents, and from what the kids told Ann, I think, earlier, we, we would certainly encourage participation, we're not sure that we'll get it. And we thought it was an awful lot to do at one time. We would, I think our board would have rather have seen kind of like a pilot program this year to see how it worked, to work out some of the quirks it might have been in it. I, I know that the, that the, you know, the thoughts were along a different line. And, you know, there is, whether you like it or not, there are some schools that are still concerned about their individuality, and, and our school, you know, our school is one of them. And I think that, you know, I, I appreciate what Ann did, obviously, whatever decision is made here tonight, it's not, it's not going to matter, you know, what Kent and Canaan say, because the votes are already in based on what we, on what we presented. I would be happy, maybe even if Ann was willing, for Ann to go back and take that with our board and, you know, go, go over this, so that they better understood it and might feel more comfortable, might feel more comfortable with it.
I mean, I think, I think as this, you know, I, one of the things I stressed to my board was that it's, it's not going to be as written necessarily, that it is very much something that's, that needs to be nimble and responsive from here on out, if we're going to go forward with this, you know, to the point where even when it drops and we start doing it, we're going to still have to be nimble and responsive, because there will be mistakes made, there will be things we didn't think about and anticipate. So I would encourage that we, assuming this is moving forward, are, not necessarily holding people at task, but communicating, communicating the evolution of what this is actually going to be.
Well, I, I think that that's, I think that that's very important.
Whether it's Ann at the table or us going to the table.
And I think it's great, you know, people that know me know that I've been involved in youth sports for my entire adult life in administrative types of positions. And the, the other thing that came up was cost. And I, I know that I, I also have a connection to Lincoln as, as well, and I know that, that cost was, that's pretty expensive for my gain, I guess, in terms of the increase. The cost was also a consideration, and the piece that wasn't in what we presented to our boards was the, you know, the robotics and the art garage, which I think is, is wonderful. I'm not quite sure how, it's too bad that both of those couldn't be at the high school, because you're kind of set up for that already. I know we have to do, I know it's.
Well, there would be on the winter and spring.
Right. And that piece wasn't really, that piece was kind of a forward thinking piece that, all right, didn't know what was going to happen, but now it appears that there may be at least an opportunity for you to, you know, during the course of the season, that you, you might have six or eight times that kids could do that, which I think is wonderful. And with so many sports, I wonder, I, I worry a little bit about, you know, draining down off, I, I know it's good to have, kids have sports that they want to participate in, and they think they might like, other than your, you know, your, your big three, so to speak, in the fall, spring. The only other question I had, Ann, was I was looking back over at the survey then, was done way back when, back in the spring, and volleyball was a very, very popular sport. Why wasn't that considered as one of the fall sports?
Because there's not a lot of middle school volleyball teams out there.
We didn't have anybody to play.
The only person right now that has a volleyball team is Northwestern.
Okay.
So it's very difficult to get.
Because that was very, I was, I was surprised.
It is, no, it is, absolutely.
That had a quite a high percentage of kids who were interested.
Absolutely.
Hopefully you get to play here.
That's, if it, if this year's any inclination on it, yes, yeah, they're, they're coming up the pipeline, so.
Thank you, Pat. Erin?
We had a few parents show up, and then we followed in Kent's lead, because only a few showed up during the, Ann's informational meeting, and after the meeting, we decided as a board that we wanted to do more. So I emailed and said, can we please use your video link, so that anybody that wasn't able to make it to the meeting, they could, so we sent out a video link and a short, you know.
Survey.
Two-question survey, saying, do you, you know, are you for or against, and comments and concerns, and we had some, some people respond to that, but when we did vote, we voted six yes and one no. And we also tried to stress, you know, this is going to be an ongoing, you know, any major change takes a lot of communication, listening, and reworking before it can be successful. And we tried to say, you know, we're going, this isn't written in stone, we did the same thing, this is going to have to be, you know, molded as we go, and we're not going to know until we try. And we couldn't really think of any other great alternatives, so, you know, we all decided, yeah, let's, let's try this, and let's work together as a, you know, collaborative effort with the other towns, and, and try and make, you know, make a go of it. So that was, that was what we had in North Canaan.
We did go by, but we weighed heavily what our constituents, what our constituents were.
Expressed, yeah, I got it. Go on.
Yeah, there's no secret.
Yeah.
They, they, you know, for the, the people at Kent, they, I think a lot of people were very. They, they, you know, for the, the people at Kent, they, I think a lot of people were very excited. They liked the opportunity, sounds great. However, we don't feel it's, at this time, we're, we're gonna be out for. And, you know, we've really looked at it, obviously cost, and we're gonna be running our own program and continuing on with our own. And we definitely want, you know, Digital One to also consider us as part of policy seventy-four eleven to be considered because this is cost programs and services which can be identified applying to only specific schools for us not to be included in this at this time, until, you know, maybe later on we can, you know, jump in.
So you guys, moving forward, if, if this was to go forward and be put into the budget, you guys would just choose not to participate in it? As far as your students participating?
Yeah, we, we had the students, I don't know, it was interesting, students actually started their own petition against it. But then we calmed them down, had a conversation with them, had their own, they had their own separate survey from the parents, but obviously.
They were against?
They, they're against it, you know, for now. We've been trying to tell them, you know, what, what are the good things. The pa, the parents, for the most part, we do have some parents that are a little more on the proactive side and looking at it as an opportunity. And I think as it goes along, there might be an opportunity for us to definitely.
Did any of the changes that Ann's made thus far address any of the concerns that you guys have?
I mean, it would probably address that, but now if I go back and say, hey, we're gonna use our brand-new bus now for this too, I don't know, you know, it's, it's gonna be interesting. I think it could, but I, we currently have twenty, I don't know, many, twenty-two girls soccer players, twenty, about the same amount of number, I mean forty-four people playing soccer. They all fit on the fourteen-passing bus, even if they were as in a varsity and D-team. So, you know, we'd have to go back to going to a big bus. You know, there'd be, it would be too much if they all wanted to do it, if they did want to go to a big bus. That's just for soccer. Basketball has its things. I just think, I think it's great, a lot of opportunities. I do like the, currently it says here, using current bus for the winter and, and spring, we could do the art garage and robotics without, that's actually not affecting any of this. You know, that's, that's a nice add-on that we could do.
Regional chorus and band kids.
Yeah, exactly, it's already there. So I think that's a great way to step, you know, step that into.
Right, it was just being added.
How would that work for, would the coaches then have to set up games to find teams to play? Or would that still fall on Ann if you were, didn't partake?
Right, I mean, that's, that's where the conversation would go.
Right, oh, okay.
We, we schedule our own, would you guys wanna play us? You know, I mean, if, if, if that's what you want, what you're gonna do.
I, I think you bring up an in, in, interesting point when you brought up the, uh, the policy. I wasn't gonna go there, but I'm glad you, you did.
I agree, my taxpayers are, no, I gotta protect them.
Yeah, and, and we're not as, you know, we're, we're not as affected money-wise as much as you are, maybe percentage-wise, of course. But it, my understanding, how, how are you gonna deal with that, with that, with that policy?
How does, didn't Pam bring up something about the, the ESL, the language? And how everybody contributes, but only some schools have like one or two kids? And there's schools that have ten or fourteen, but everybody pays into it? So that's gonna open a Pandora's box, I would think, of people going, well, we only have one kid, we don't wanna.
This is an after, this is an after-school activity, that is an academic activity, the ESL.
It's all, it's all case by case, and I think that's what allows, I mean, having that policy in there allows us to venture into that, you know, to say, okay.
Right.
If we have zero people participating, yeah, I mean.
Right.
We didn't talk about it, quite frankly, but I, I can't imagine, you, you're still a member of the region. So if your kids wanna participate as a separate entity, we would support that, we would schedule for you. We would do whatever we need to do to make students at Kent Center School have a good, good experience, I mean.
But, but would they still be, if it's, if it's, if it's a shared service, which this program would be a shared service, given that it's.
Right, well, right now, part of Ann's salary is in the regional service center.
Well, I'm not, I'm, I'm talking about.
Regional athletic director.
Correct.
So whether those students are part of this quote-unquote middle school plan or not.
No, that wasn't my question, that wasn't my question. My question was, are you, were you asking for not, if you don't participate, not to pay your share?
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, but we would, we would also, we would also, but not participate.
I don't think that's an option, you're still gonna get billed as part of the assessment.
And we would ask for policy seventy-four eleven to really be looked at because according to the, the way that's stated, if we're not participating, you can, this is a separate program, we're not gonna participate. We would also reduce the cost by not being in it.
Right.
Transportation being one of the biggest ones, we're gonna be out of it, that's, that's a huge savings to the group.
Well, we have to look at, we have to look at.
We'd have to look at our lawyer, school attorney or somebody else, but not.
I mean, I take that advice.
Always, always fun, you know, gotta get the school attorneys and stuff. But I was just saying, I mean, that's, that's our piece.
Okay.
For now, I mean, again, we, I think it looks good.
Was everyone opposed, like opposed village?
On the board, yeah, I mean, yeah, dude, the town was not, you know, we had, listening to our constituents, who we know.
Yeah, we did too.
There were people that were saying they'd love to look at it for down the road, like, you know, when we develop it more, but at this point, right now, no.
Okay. Doug? If we had to vote in October, it would have been no because there were just too many questions, mostly on the transportation and supervision. However, when Ann came in and spoke to us, she answered all of the questions that we had anyway. This is icing on the cake for us. And to be honest with you, she earned our trust. She, we believe that she'll do what's best for the school and our kids, that she'll close up any holes. The committees that she had, one caveat that the, the board did wanna add was that you continue with some sort of a focus group or committee to ensure that any of the, the issues in the region, the transportation, the supervision, whatever it might be, are covered. And, and with that, we would vote yes at this time.
Okay. Yeah?
Cornwall voted a hundred percent yes, with the condition that the busing situation was addressed.
Addressed.
And clearly, since our, since your presentation, you have addressed, and this was our big concern. And so, you know, I think, I think you've done a great job, this is.
Did you, did you hear from, did you hear from the, the council, did you have a?
We had a huge turnout.
You had a huge turnout, that's great.
Yeah, Cornwall, it's very, people turn up. So.
Thank you. Salisbury, we had a, we weren't able to get a forum together on the night of Ann's presentation, but there was a well-attended presentation on Ann's part and a good, kinda, I would say cathartic kinda Q and A following. I'd say there were about thirty to forty people maybe, including a middle school student who was eloquently spoken.
It was quite. Yes, he did enough of that.
And there were teachers, parents, parents who are teachers, and as I said, a middle school student. Again, you know, the concerns were the same, you know, travel time, being on a high school bus, evaluating talent and skills and, you know, does that put kids off? But I think that everybody sort of begrudgingly to some extent came to the realization that this is something that's necessary for our kids moving forward based on, you know, just demographics and declining enrollment. And were convinced enough that Ann and the committee that helped Ann form this initially would continue to look at it, to make changes as are needed and to make, to build it as best we can. And a lot of that is gonna be learning from doing, I think, and I think everybody kinda understood that. When we came a week later to put it up to the board, we only had five people present, it was four to one. One of the absent members had voiced their support of it, and the last member I never polled. So it was, and, and again, the concerns were similar to Kent. The dissenting voice on my board felt that it wasn't necessary for us now. Because again, we're fielding full teams in all the major sports. But, you know, we're also sometimes happy to bring up sixth graders to, to help out, also, you know, so it's, I don't think in three years that what was true this fall will be true anymore for us, so. Anyway, that was, that was where we landed. So, yeah, everybody was kind of excited about it at the end, I think, the prospect of what could be built. So do we feel like we need any further discussion? Or can we put a motion on to recommend this, as we've been charged by our boards to do, or, or not?
Not, or not.
Or not, as the case may be.
Like whatever, whatever charge we would have.
I make the motion to do what you just said.
I think it's, I, I believe it's to, to request that the region one board create a line item, a, a budget line in our shared services to create a middle school sports program.
I, I do think that the, the motion should indicate that it's revised from what, because Ann, I assume that this is what you're gonna do, right? So it's a revision from your presentation, so the revised, the revised proposal.
The bus schedule.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Including, including this.
Well, that will have to change again.
Now, is this?
That will have to change again if, if Kent is, is, is not participating.
Well, that will change if Kent is.
Again, we'll, we'll have to, I, I'm, I'm loathe to say it's gonna be this, because I, it's not. I mean, it's just not.
I agree with what you're saying, but it's.
Whether, you know, whether Kent changed, hasn't changed a heart and says they wanna participate or not, I still say that.
The, the concept of what you're, what Ann is proposing, you're still saying, saying whether Kent participates or not.
Yes, absolutely.
So the, the program stays the same, how you might execute that program in terms of transportation and other things may change, but not the concept of what you wanna do.
So now misunderstanding what you're asking us to state.
No, I think that what, what.
The caveat though is that the schedule, the bus schedule is, 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 is less time. Can we do that or not?
Unless we revise, that's what I meant by the revision.
But you're saying you can't commit to the schedule at this point, is that correct?
Well, we're using, right now, the way this is constructed, we're, we're planning on using Kent's bus. Kent may not want us to use their buses.
But if Kent, but if Kent's not, if Kent's not in, you don't need my bus.
Right, if Kent's not in it.
Okay.
Right, they're, they're fixing anyone else.
Yeah, yeah, I see what you're saying, someone's watching, yeah.
Yes, that's gonna be.
The plan was for two buses, we go back to two buses.
Got it, yeah, yeah.
Or, or no more than two, got it.
So that becomes, that becomes a corner.
Yeah, exactly.
Right. I think it's ducks, and this is icing on the cake, it's only gonna improve.
That, that bus, that W bus is our bus here at the high school.
Yes, you're right, it's a K bus.
The K bus, the K bus is.
That would be out, that's really designated almost, almost solely for Kent.
Just solely for Kent.
For Kent, K bus.
So Kent, Kent can stay home and not use their bus to transport their kids to our practices instead of using it to transport to their practices and.
Filtered.
Filtered.
Yeah.
The opportunity to serve under the.
So the motion on the table is to put forward a request to the region one board to add a line item in their, in our shared services budget for funding a middle school's athletics and activities program as defined tonight by Ann. I'll second. Second, any further discussion?
Is that withdrawing us?
No, that's.
That's understanding, that's understanding, you know, we'll vote on it the way it is and we'll, and, I mean, to be honest, I think that we're just gonna have to talk, talk.
Let the region one board then figure out their pieces.
We're gonna have to talk about how we figure out your, 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 your.
We'll look at the cost analysis of us in, us out, whatever.
I think, I think we'll have to examine all of it, we'll have to examine that policy and see where, we'll see what, try and do the right thing for everybody involved. I mean, I don't wanna mug anybody. Taxing somebody is different than mugging somebody, I don't like it. Anyway, so all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstaining? Thank you very much. So we'll let, we'll let the regional one board know that we like this. See what those numbers are. But you, you may wanna, you know, Sam, you know, examine both scenarios, budget, budget-wise, you know, that's what the numbers are actually gonna be. And maybe, and if you could, you know, in, in communicating back to all of us, let us, you know, I think the more information you can provide about different scenarios and how, and how it impacts us.
Pat mentioned if you wanna revisit the fall buildings for a brief, should, with the same consideration be given to Kent with sort of this different plan, if you will, on the table.
Is it worth revisiting, revisiting your board and more importantly, your parents and kids?
With the new, with this?
With the way things are evolving?
I think people will, I think we'll go on board eventually, right? That's what I'm saying, it's just not, even if I went back with this, they're gonna be like, well, now we're gonna use our bus, we still don't have. I think for everybody in Kent, they feel still, still too many unanswered questions and they're happy with where we're at because we have the numbers. You know, it's the same thing, I think they would love maybe come down later, but right now, at this time, no.
Well, maybe.
They're not ready to jump onto this.
Maybe if they, maybe even if they're not ready to jump on.
It has nothing to do with as constructed, it has to do with the concept of it at all, they don't wanna.
Right now, you know, everybody's like, you know, they're happy with status quo at the moment. There are people that did voice their concerns, everybody acknowledges demographics, right? Everybody knows everything's coming down.
But they wanna kick the can down the road for.
Well, they're gonna, we wanna make sure, let's put the plan in place, so it's really, but, I mean, to be honest, I, I brought it up at the last.
They want us, you want us, you want us to make it work and then you.
No, no, I want, I think, I think, I think what I brought up at the last ABC meeting is, we, if this is the real thing we have to do, we really have to start considering then, is it that we've all become elementary schools? And then we have a middle school? You know what I mean, it's like, it's, to me, it seems like there's something else somewhere that people are thinking of, but we never bring it up to the table.
Yeah, I think you're absolutely correct.
And that's what, that's what's kind of happening, so like, if we're already doing the regionalization, then do it right, you know, like not, okay, a little bit, a little bit here, you know, we're doing, we did the grading, then we did this.
Well, the idea of doing a, a regional middle school is, you know, not beyond the pale.
Exactly.
Where's the money coming from?
Yeah, and I don't think, and I don't think.
Right now, the taxpayers are gonna freak, man, I can't, I, I don't even know what the percentage of people at my school are boarding school families.
Right.
That's not, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
And we, and it's not like we can just turn around and say, okay, sure, you know, whatever you want.
Yeah.
But we can't, cause we can't.
Yeah.
So I think we have to protect them as much as possible, we can't just, you know, throw out, and when we saw those numbers, it's like, wow, okay. Yeah, that's a lot of money for something we don't know. You know, we're not, we're not there yet, doesn't necessarily equal, it could be great. I think the little steps, like doing the other stuff, like, you know, adding the art garage, all the robotics and those, those things are steps that we could, we could do to, you know, win the trust. A lot of that too is, is based on that, it's not for Dan, I know that, because everybody appreciated what she did that day.
Yeah, yeah.
That was like one of the best presentations and meetings we've ever had.
Our, our board will, you know, I will arrange with Ann, that's validated, so you can get through that. I will arrange so that, that our board will have an update about the changes that were made between the time we, between the time Ann made the original presentation, took into consideration what people told you, which I think is great. And then what you did to try and alleviate some of those problems. I, I think that in our case, it would, it may make people feel a little bit more comfortable, but I can't guarantee it. But I think it's really important that everybody know and understand what changes were made.
Okay, so, yes?
So can I just one last question? Will you have the sort of idea if, if, with some different scenario, when will you have that information? That we can then range to our boards? I mean, when do you think you guys will have your sort of?
Would you point at?
Better budget numbers?
Well, in terms of if Kent, if Kent is dropping out.
Well, there's another question on that, if we can, according to that, but I think we have to come up with the budget scenarios of.
I think we have to have two, we have to have two scenarios, one where Kent is, is a financial participant and one where they're, where they're not, if, if, if we've examined.
I don't think it takes that long.
If we have examined a policy.
Yeah, I'll.
We hadn't, this, we hadn't even looked at that possibility.
Yeah.
I mean, we should have, but we didn't.
Yeah.
No, it's fine, doesn't matter.
But it'd be interesting to see, to see both, just to know what, what kind of impact their request to not financially participate have on us. You know, for the positive more branding, so back to that question, for the handful of kids from Kent, do you wanna participate? Unless somebody's paying for it, they can, they wouldn't, they'd be excluded from it, right? I mean, right?
Right, that don't make sense.
And we have to, I mean, it's, it's something, it's a discussion to be had at another time, isn't it? We have to examine the way we, I think, we're supposed to govern our services. So that's it, but I'd be curious just to have in your, you know, just in your pockets to pull out so that we can. But I think that, I think the decision to excuse them from financial responsibility is a conversation that we have to have at the, probably the next ABC meeting. If that's the way we're gonna move forward, you know, right?
I agree.
You know, I don't know how we resolve it, if there's a, you know, a difference of opinion, but well, we will sort it out. They haven't said that they wouldn't be willing participants, they just said that they weren't endorsing the plan. Pat? Pat, I'm sorry. You, you guys are, are not refusing to be participants in it. Your vote, your, your judgment was that it's, it's not, at that time, when you took the vote, your judgment was, we're not in favor of.
The, the question we were asked is, do we approve of the proposal?
Got it.
And our answer was no.
Was no.
However, a, a good point, when we decided to do this, we, we decided that, we decided that the high school chair would not count on this. And I kind of wondered how that got to be because I, I know that the high school is not part of the cost of it, right?
Yeah.
But is it in concert, is it in concert with our bylaws, I, I'm wondering? I, I don't know.
I'm not sure.
A, a good point is that robot rules of orders, as far as I know, they are, are, are guidelines for our, our meetings. And they, they don't necessarily have to be followed, is, is my understanding, they are guidelines. My understanding, and I did bring this up because we made this decision about the high school being excluded from this vote. My understanding, and I did bring this up because we made this decision about the high school being excluded from this vote, right? And so are you then therefore saying that because we exclude the high school from the vote, that we meet the two-thirds requirement of four and two, 'cause that's what the, what the whole deal was, right, that in order for it to pass, you had to have four out of six, which is, which constitutes the two-thirds? But how did we arrive at the decision that, that the high school doesn't count in this case? It doesn't count because the program is being put in the RSSC budget and the high school does not contribute to that, is that the reason why?
I'm not a hundred percent.
The, the, the high, the entire high school budget and the RSS, and RSS, it's, we're funding it. It's, it's our towns that are contributing the money to that pop.
Excepted on the A B.
A, and A, and B, this is my understanding, and B, the high school is not a participant of that service in any way, shape or form.
No, wait, well, but the high school is a participant of the ABC.
Of the decision-making process, yes.
Exactly. They are part of the ABC.
Correct.
Okay, committee.
Yeah.
And the chairman has a say in that as a voting member.
Yes, as a voting member.
And I, and I don't wanna throw, I don't wanna throw a wrench in this, but I just wanna make sure that, that we're doing it correctly, because we were told, I think, by, I think by Pam last time, that be, because the high school would not pay any money from its budget for this service, that's my understanding, right, Sam?
Yeah, I don't know if that's the reason she gave, but the reason, the rationale was that the high school would not need to vote as part of.
Well, there's gotta be a reason for that, and by assumption.
Well, I think it's because of what David said, they're not participating in middle school.
I would assume.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
Well, that's different than they're not paying, 'cause technically.
But, but they aren't, but, but they aren't paying.
Technically, they are paying. Technically, the high school pays a portion of the RSSC budget, yes, they pay technically.
But they're not, but you're taking out that portion.
Contributing our money back.
You're taking out the cost of this middle school program, that's all I'm asking.
We're the only ones that are choosing to be above the on.
I was, I, when that was proposed, I thought that that was, that sounded reasonable to me, okay, because the high school isn't participating, but then again, when you look at the seven thousand series, it does include everyone. I also understand that these policies are guidelines and that you can, you know, that you can make changes.
It's, it's four, before need to vote, whether, I don't think it says two-thirds.
It does.
It does say two-thirds?
It does say, it does say two-thirds.
Okay.
It says two-thirds in total.
It says two, I believe, I, I don't have it on me, but I believe what that, that says is that you have to have a two-thirds vote of the ABC committee to send something to the high school board for consideration. So I, I know that we have the ability, okay.
So the high school, the question is, does the high school vote and then turn around and vote to give it to itself?
Well, no, my, I guess my question is, can we eliminate the high school after vote, because they don't, because, because the way you have set up, the payment is only, only, only is the, the pound.
Six.
The six pounds. It's just something to think about, you know, and I don't know, um, I think we should look, we should look into that.
I, I need to go to Lou, so could we suspend this for a minute and we'll get on, we'll move on? Yes?
Yeah, you're excused.
You got this.
Yeah, David, me or David, give me my key.
Is it locked?
Yeah.
Why?
Practice, right?
No, that's not ours.
Oh.
Oh, that's the men.
Why didn't they lock? Oh, the, the kids don't get to use it.
Yeah. Don't hurt yourself in my keys. Yes.
All right, stretch.
Maybe, maybe we can look, look into, yeah, look into that, I can, just so that we can make sure that whatever the decision.
Now, it's the Good Friday holiday. If you guys remember when we were looking at improving the nine, two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty calendar, there was some concern expressed about continuous weeks of education, in other words, full five-day weeks of education, it was posited that perhaps we could eliminate some holidays. Well, first was, we talked about PD, thank you, Anne, very much.
Thank you, Anne.
We could eliminate PD days, that was shot down relatively quickly because of the need for professional training for our educators. The next thing that kind of was put up was that perhaps we could eliminate some religious holidays. So what was decided was that there would be a Jewish holiday and a Christian holiday that were eliminated, so brings us to Good Friday. The difficulty that we're running into right now is, thankfully, our teachers are being proactive in letting, in letting us know at the various schools through the region that they will be taking a holiday that day as is their prerogative, a religious holiday or a personal day. So we are in a situation now where we will not be able to staff our schools. There are enough teachers out that we won't even be able to get substitutes to fill those vacancies on that day. I do believe that this is something that is really up to each school, as far as setting their own calendar and deciding whether or not they're either gonna do a half day or have it become a vacation day. The difficulty we have now is that the Jewish holiday is passed, that was not offered to our staff and families. And so we're sort of saying, well, we took the both away, but, well, we really only took the one away, 'cause we're gonna make this a holiday. So it's a little bit awkward, so we have, I think we just have to be centered about how we handle it.
And pray for snow.
And pray for snow, but I think, I think that Pam's, Pam's wish is that each school would make it a half day, you know, straight away, to see if that shifts the amount of, of teachers that are planning on taking the entire day off.
Well, I think that for Good Friday, for Christians, most, most services are in the afternoon, so that would seem.
That was gonna be a question.
That would seem to be a, you know, a, a, kind of a, you know, a middle ground.
And it would count as a full day.
Yes.
It would count as a school, as a school day, yes.
Yeah, it was counted as a school day, yeah.
I was gonna, I mean, I grew up Catholic.
Me too.
Uh, went to Catholic school for twelve years. I don't ever remember really celebrating Good Friday, other than learning about it, but going to a Catholic school, we went to church on any kind of, but, um, so I'm, I guess I'm just pleading ignorance right now as to what do people, what is the celebration of Good Friday that people are concerned about missing or attending or?
I think that, I think, I don't, I think that it's probably really just getting a jump on the Easter holiday and getting out of town or, I mean, you know, I, I mean, I don't.
Strike that.
I'm not accusing anybody, I'm just saying, I think that that's.
What's the reality, yeah.
I think that that's what it is.
I do think that Pam does propose the, the middle ground, because as we know and you know, I, you know, our services are in the, in the afternoon, so it wouldn't.
They usually accommodate, and they usually accommodate, you know, working hours, you know, it's usually a vigil, usually a vigil mass. So I, I don't think that that necessarily will alleviate the situation, but I think that's a good first step for us to try and maintain the calendar as we've decided it should be without.
But the only other, because if you don't do it that way, the only other, the only other, the only other option, I think, is say, okay, we have to do a Friday off and we have to, we tack on the day at the end of the school year, and then next year we'll have to put Good Friday back in the calendar and take, if we wanna maintain the school days that we currently have, we take another holiday, and if we're gonna do that, I would, I would suggest.
The difficulty that we ran into is, here's my problem with.
Wait, I just.
Yeah, go ahead.
I just Googled, and one of the questions is, do you go to church on Good Friday? For Roman Catholics, there is no Mass on Good Friday.
It's not a Mass, it's just a service.
Oh, okay, however, there's usually a service with Holy Communion, the Holy Rosary is especially good, right, blah, 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 Holy Mass, many churches also have the Stations of the Cross. Okay, so it's not a Mass, it's a service.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
Correct, yeah, yeah, sorry, I said.
And that's true for Christian churches, but if you, if we already gave a day off for the Jewish holiday.
We didn't.
We did not, okay, well, we have to be, we have to be equal. Well, if we can't, the, the, but the, the reality of the matter is, though, that if we can't get enough substitutes, to, to, if we can't get enough substitutes.
We won't, we won't be able to, we, we won't be able to have, we won't be able to have a school day, if it's possible, we could cobble together, you know, activities for that day, an indoor field day, where we might have a staff to, to oversee the, the students, but it, it's not really gonna be a, a school day.
So what happens if we vote for a half a day?
Well, I think we can recommend it.
Yeah, we could, so is that what we would need to do? We would need to recommend to our, our boards and our teachers?
We, we would ask Pam to recommend.
I think it's your administrators, yeah, I mean, it's, it's, it's for each of us to go to our administrator and say, look, this is what we collectively have decided, so.
And I think that when we, when we're planning the calendar next year, you know, if people are gonna take Good Friday off and.
Well, I think that we have to.
I think that we, we need to get that day back, though, so.
It's not, we're not losing, okay, so here's the thing.
No, 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 no.
We're not, hold on a second, we're not losing, hold on, we didn't, no, we didn't take away, we didn't take away these two holidays because we're short school days. We took away these two holidays because there was a, hold on, Pam, Pat, I'm telling you, I was part of the discussion, so were you.
So was I, and I'm the one that brought it on, right?
There were, yes, there were not enough weeks of, continuous weeks of education, full weeks of education, that was the concern.
Not only continuous, just enough for weeks period, too.
Correct. You, the, the feeling was, the concern was expressed, that there were not enough full weeks of education. How do we gain two more of those?
Right.
And this is the solution that was landed upon. I would venture to say it's not a good solution.
Well.
But, that having been said, we'll deal with that when the calendar comes out this year, however, for this year, we have to, we have to address it as a region, individually and as a region.
Yeah, I think that, I think that Pam has put forth a good idea, I think that we bring that back to our boards and hope that that will, hope that that will solve, that, that will solve the issue.
And I would just also just say, you know, encourage the administrators to continue to poll their staff to make sure that.
Well, we think that she did give us numbers, did she not?
Yeah, but you, you know how early these numbers are.
Well, I'm just saying, the, the numbers are already high.
Yes.
And, and, and we could, I don't think we could expect.
But is there.
The only thing we can expect is more and more.
We need to find out, but we, yes, we need to find out from our staff whether that would alleviate their, their need to take a personal or religious day.
Well, I think that's what Pam's suggesting, and I'm saying, saying I agree with that.
Okay, so.
Okay, great, so.
Each board should go back to their.
Correct, I don't know that we need a motion, I don't know that we need to take a vote on it, this is really, this is a discussion.
Well, I think that Pam's can, can, if Pam has our feelings, she can talk to each board as she meets with them this month, right, about that.
I mean, we could, I, I would, I would entertain, I'd entertain a motion that we, that we all, that we all say we're gonna, I would entertain a motion that we all will go back to our administrators with the recommendation that Good Friday become a half day of school.
I think we recommend that. The administrators, I'm assuming already know, because they discussed this, if you read the administrative notes.
They do, but I think that in order to.
They've already discussed, they, they already discussed.
In order to make a change to, to an approved calendar, don't we have to do it?
We have, the, the board has to do it, yeah, the board has to do it, yeah.
Correct.
So if I make a motion that we.
Go back to our boards.
Go to our boards to request that we have half day, amend our calendar and make half day for Good Friday.
Right, whatever day that is, I don't even know what day that is.
It's a Friday.
It's a Friday.
Do I have a second?
Sure, I'll second.
Uh, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Uh, yeah, and I would just encourage everybody to be in close communication with your administrator about numbers.
Right.
It is, it may come back around again.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, this may, if it doesn't work, then.
Well, at least we're addressing it early.
Yeah, no, well, I mean, to be honest, this came out of teachers being proactive about, or staff being proactive about letting administrators know that this was how they were planning on, on dealing with. The subtraction of their holiday. Okay, uh, next, we have a proposal from Mr. Ian Streber, our high school principal.
Thank you. So in, in a similar vein, our, our teachers don't anticipate taking Good Friday, we didn't have a lot of requests for that, but they're in the process of putting together a celebration for the last day before the winter holiday. And traditionally, that's been a half day, for probably reasons closer to what you described before, and so the reality of what happens in most schools, again, this is, it goes back to the, the, the reality of that situation is you're not gonna have a staff. Probably what happens in most schools, the day before a long break like that, not a lot of learning happens, to be, to be frank. Yeah, it's a half day, it's, you know, a kind of a celebration of, you know, the fact that you've gotten to this point in the year and, and you got a little breathing room. So my, it's less a proposal, but I guess a query of the members of this group about what the feeling is from your districts and if there's been any conversation about turning that into a half day as well. And I don't know if there's been any conversation, I don't want to advance it as a proposal necessarily, just on the high school's behalf, but I would just ask you to, to have a discussion about whether that's a, a realistic and worthwhile.
Half day before which?
Before the, I'm, I'm on a break, I mean.
Oh, okay.
The, if, I think that, I would, I think that that would be appropriate if Christmas was two or three days away, but Christmas is well into the following week. And it's not like people don't have time to, to make their plans, to, to do whatever they're going to do. One of the, one of the things that we wanted to do, or at least I thought that was kind of a consensus of all of us, is that we wanted to make sure that we were giving the maximum amount of time that we could for the kids to be in front of the classroom and, 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 and doing things, and, and I know it's hard, but this is an awful long way out, and, and if we do it in the high school.
Well, we're planning an activity that day that, that will probably take a couple of hours, kind of a, a holiday celebration, but, I mean, try entertaining, I mean, you know, elementary kids for a, a full day, regardless of whether it's a week out, you know, it's gonna be the last day before break, that's, I mean.
I did it for thirty-seven years, and you could guess.
And, and almost all of those were probably half days, I would guess, the day before break.
Yes, but they, but, but, but the, but the, the holiday, we, all I can tell you is my experience, we would, when I was teaching, we would have not gotten out on the twentieth if, if, if Christmas was on Wednesday or Thursday.
Yeah.
We would have gone to school on Monday. And that would have been reasonable to have a half day then, because then you're just two days out, but this way, you're, you're five days out.
When is Christmas next school year, on Thursday?
It's Tuesday or Wednesday, oh, it's Wednesday this year, isn't it?
I don't know, there's a leap year this year, right?
It's Wednesday.
Is it Wednesday this year?
It's Wednesday this year.
Yeah.
So just to be clear, you want us to sort of take a poll of our, well, I get, I was really just wondering whether there'd been conversation or suggestions from your towns about doing that?
No conversations from us, I know that there's, there's been pushback, though, in the half days, because it does create a problem for parents to have to pick their kids up or make arrangements, and creating another one, uh, Good Friday, is, is just kind of complicated if we did it a second time. It might get too much, and there's a good business reason for it.
Well, this is, you, are you talking about, just wondering whether this is something we would wanna do region-wide, or is it something that you?
I would request it just for the high school, but if they were interested, if, if you'd heard from parents and, you know, everybody else.
I haven't, I mean, I guess what, it's silly to say we're far out, 'cause we're really not that far out from it, but I think, I was so consumed with, you know, Thursday, and they haven't thought ahead to Christmas, but I haven't heard any buzz.
Uh, we haven't heard anything from the elementary school models, I, I, I don't know.
I mean, I would say, absolutely.
Yeah, I think that.
I mean, it's a question that we could, it, it is, I mean, honestly, a question I could push to my administrator, because she would certainly be more aware of, of that buzz than I would.
That's true.
And did you indicate, had you talked to Pam about this?
About?
About the possible early dismissal?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I'm assuming that you guys talked about this at the administrator's meeting, that you had, the vice administrator's meeting.
No, I, I talked about it with her. I mean, the point is, I, I've had, there's no point in going any further from what, from what I'm hearing, I think.
I would, the only thing I'd, I'd say, Ian, is that at, that at the next administrator's meeting, I would put it to the administrators to see if they, 'cause I think they would have a, a, a more pulse of it, you know, more sense of the pulse of it.
Okay.
'Cause I mean, it's not, the buzz among my fellow parents and I aren't talking about it, but that's, we're trying to avoid half days.
Your point is, your point is cogent, because, you know, we think about Christmas being far away, but it's really not that far away.
Yeah, but it's not, you know, I'm not thinking about what, what the schedule is.
And your point about, you know, people having to make different arrangements, you know, in less than three weeks for their kids if they get out at one o'clock.
Yeah.
You know.
Okay.
We need that time to shop.
It's extra shopping time. All right, thank you, Ian.
Yep, thank you.
Yeah. Next is our 2020 meeting dates. Which occur on the fourth Wednesday of each month at seven o'clock here in central office. Reminder that all these dates are not mandatory meetings, in other words, we're not bound to, I think we're bound to have, have four, you know, one a quarter annually. We have more because.
Love getting together, man.
Love hanging out.